Good evening, everyone. Buenos noches a todos. Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Again, welcome, everyone. Bienvenidos a todos a otra junta del visito de Rabbit City. If you're speaking to the board, please go ahead and fill out a Google Doc, and if you are in person, please fill out a card. And if you need Spanish translation, si necesitas traducción al español, por favor, llame al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número para la contraseña. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I was, hi, I was wondering, we have, oh, I wrote it down, eight point two to eight point five on action. I don't know if they need to stay on action or if they could move to consent. I know eight point one is a resolution. Or if staff wanted to talk to us about any of those things, they could stay on action.
Alyssa, eight point three needs to stay on because there's something that Liz needs to mention regarding the correction for eight point three. So that one will need to stay on, just so we have that, just so we have that in the minutes. The others can move forward if that's fine with them.
Okay, so eight point two, eight point four, eight point five to consent. That would be my recommendation. And I'll make a motion to approve those changes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Locum. Okay.
Okay, do we have any oral communication?
Yes, we have two speakers. Shagupta Mansour.
Hi. Well. I'm here to talk about one of the concern for my son who goes to special day class at a Roosevelt School. So it's been very hot lately, and he's a special need child, and I went to his class today. The classroom temperature was around ninety-five degrees. There were four fans on, and the windows had foil all over. And I talked to principal yesterday regarding to give like maybe portable AC. So the class is not too hot because he's, he is medical condition and he's at risk of getting dehydrated fast. So that's why I'm here to talk about it.
So, good evening. This is John Baker, the superintendent, and my assistant did receive, I believe you talked to her yesterday if I'm not mistaken. And she went ahead and talked to the facilities department. And because of the medical need for your child, we did order the air conditioner. And it will be delivered tomorrow. It's delivered, it was delivered today later on in the afternoon, and it'll be, it will be installed tomorrow. So that's been taken care of.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And for the rest of the board members, when there is, in the past, what has taken place in regard to air conditioning for some of our classrooms, especially those that are on the lower level and not the two-story buildings where the two-story building, the top floor is air-conditioned. When there has been a child or there has been a teacher that has come forth with a medical, medical condition, and then with that medical condition also has a recommendation from a physician, we have moved forward and gotten those portable air conditioners, and so that's what's being done in this case. We found out about it yesterday, and Evelyn spoke to Martin. Martin then got in contact with the vendor, and the vendor got it here. I spoke to Martin this evening. It was here this afternoon, but it'll be installed tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And who's the next speaker?
Katie Godd.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am speaking tonight on behalf of myself and my daughter Evelyn. She helped me put together these statements. On Sunday, August twenty-eighth, we received word that beginning on Wednesday, the thirty-first, our daughter and her class would have a new English language arts teacher at Orion. Along with her class beginning with a new teacher, five other classes at our school, one Mandarin and four English classes, would also experience at least some level of disruption. My daughter's teacher, Ms. Dingler, would be moved to Hoover. And we recognize this as a silver lining. Students at Hoover who lacked a permanent teacher would now have one. I've spent the last week and change wondering if there was a way to do all of this with less disruption. Evelyn tells me that they'd learned Ms. Dingler's system and expectations, both the expectations for classroom behavior, as well as what they could expect to learn during their fourth grade year. We are now a week into this new arrangement, and Evelyn says they are still learning Ms. Solanke's system. But according to Evelyn, they would have already learned Ms. Solanke's system if they had had her from the start. We are frustrated that it took two weeks to make the changes necessary for the correct teachers to be in the correct places. We hope that in the future, less disruption will occur, and teachers will be in place with their classes from the start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Maria just did. So Carlos, can you see Maria? She's logged in as an attendee on her phone.
Okay, I just promoted her to panelist.
Okay, Evelyn did. So board members, just so that you're aware of a policy does, does exist in the district and has existed for many, many years. We have the first ten days of school, and we really looked at the enrollment at each school site by class, by teacher, and determined if there has to be any movement. And, and we've always had those ten days. We tried to do it prior, depending on when the, when, when the first day falls within the week of the, of the school. And this time, it was on Wednesday, and when we gave it the three days, then came back on Monday and Tuesday, we kind of knew it was kind of settled, and so that's when we started meeting with the principals and so forth. It gives us ten days to really get this moving, and this was definitely, it's something that we don't in, we don't really want to do, but at the same time, we're looking at numbers. And as we move forward, especially in the next school year, and we are planning and projecting, we will probably bring to your attention the projections, and then at the same time, why we will have less staff members at the school site, and maybe this will alleviate some of this movement that we had this year. But in the past, it's always, it's been that way for twenty-five plus years that you have those ten days, and it's always been a practice. And I can remember times as a principal where I was called and I said, you're, you're losing three teachers. And now you're going to have to make the different arrangements at, at your school site to accommodate the staff and the students you have. So we'll discuss this more thoroughly as we move forward with projections for next school year at each school site. I know this is not a, a positive manner for parents or for teachers, but it's going to necessitate us looking, do we keep with the ten days? Do we drop like to the first five and make all the changes, or do we just make those changes right at the beginning of the school year? Even though those are projections, knowing that it can go up or come down and move in that direction. But it would, it would also probably necessitate looking at combination classes, too. So just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Thank you. Item six, bond program consent items. Can I please get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Back it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Did she drop? Oh, yeah, I don't see her either.
Oh, my God.
She dropped. Was she back as an attendee?
Move forward and then if she logs in. So item seven, consent items. Can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
Action items, eight point one, recommendation, adoption of resolution twelve, authorizing electronic meeting, meetings of the Board of Trustees during the state of emergency pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, three.
This is the resolution that we have been doing each month, so it allows for any board member who is unable to attend a board meeting to attend it, to attend the meeting electronically. And I think it really benefits us so all board members can participate.
Perfect. Can I please get a motion to approve eight point one?
Yeah, I was really appreciative in August, and I'm sure I'll speak for Alyssa that I'm thirsty, she's appreciative still, so I'll move to approve.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
There's Maria. She's back. Maria's back.
Two weeks.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to go take.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You want to go to eight point three, I believe it is.
So item eight point three, recommendation regarding modification of educator effectiveness block grant of twenty twenty-one.
Sure, so I'm happy to answer any questions, but mostly I want to apologize for the discrepancy in the two numbers. There's a number on the board memo, and there's the actual, the two numbers on the board memo, and the actual correct number of the total educator effectiveness grant award amount is the one million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-eight. So the other number was not as accurate as the actual amount of our grant. So I'm apologizing for that mistake.
And with that, can I please get a motion unless somebody has any questions to approve eight point three?
They moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marcus.
Hi.
President Diaz-Locum.
Go ahead and move forward. Maybe she's, maybe she's.
Great, moving on to section nine, board and superintendent reports. I have none.
I attended the bond committee. We're getting ready for the meeting next week. I was going to join Principal Noyes last night at Clipper, but they had to cancel for back-to-school night because it was so incredibly hot, but I was lucky enough to make it over to Hoover for a bit of theirs tonight with Director Lupe. So that was nice. And then this afternoon, we had the Chamber Education Committee. This is my first time going, and I was able to fit it in, so I was glad that that worked out. And Alyssa can talk a little bit more about it because she presented there.
Thanks for attending that because I was not able to today. So I just have the bond committee meeting that we attended.
And I attended the education chamber meeting today along with John and Mike. And both Measure S, the Rabbit City Bond Measure, as well as Measure W, which is the Sequoia High School District Bond Measure, they were both presented to the chamber. They did get unanimous endorsement out of the Education Committee, and they'll be going to the full Chamber Committee. And then we heard some great updates from all of our local superintendents in the area, and that was really good. And John gave a nice update about our start of school and the preparedness of all of our staff and students and everybody. So thank you, John. And then we also heard from the state legislators, and there's a lot of bills that are sitting on the governor Newsom's desk, some of which will impact us, so we'll have to just wait and see which ones actually get signed by him and which ones get vetoed. That's about it.
I attended the same meetings, the bond meeting, chamber meeting, so.
Great, thank you. Any correspondence?
The only correspondence that I have received has been, I received five emails from parents regarding the heat conditions. I sent you all the one response I sent to the one parent, and they each got the same response. What we will need to do as we move forward is to look at this issue because I know it's not going to go away. If anything, if you look at where we were when the last bond passed, seven years ago, climate was, was different compared to where it is today. So as we move forward with the bond, and Alyssa did speak to our attorney, and she said, yes, that is part of what we have on our ballot, the cooling. So we need to make sure that people are aware that that will be something that we'll move forward with. And how we will do that will determine, you know, when the bond passes. So Jorge worked on some talking points for us to have with our community in regard to that. But there are other things that are going to take place also, not just the cooling, but there are other items that are on in the ballot book and also on the ballot of what we're going to do with the bonds. So it's something that we need to consider because I'm sure this is here to stay. You know, right now, it's the heat, and we're very lucky that we have not had any smoke. You know, because then it's closing everything down. So that was just mine with the communications.
Yeah, and I also got a couple of phone calls from parents who were concerned about the heat, and I basically told them the same thing as John just said.
Right. I thought we were on board superintendent reports.
I know. I skipped it.
Oh, you, oh, you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Hold on. Yes, I did see correspondence.
No, I think it was correspondence, right?
Yeah, I messed up. It was information before correspondence, so I apologize.
Okay.
But I mean, that's okay, I guess, moving backwards. Sorry.
That's fine. Because there was one more.
Okay, we did. Okay, great. So, okay.
I just wanted to say that we also got some emails about pesticide use, pest management at the district, and integrated pest management plans. And lots of good suggestions in there and things to think about, so just wanted to acknowledge those.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Okay, so information.
Actually, that, that is a good one, too. Oh, just real quick, sorry, just to acknowledge Mike, because the follow-up there that I know Dr. Baker and Martin Cervantes has given is that they're going to be looking into updating our integrated pest management plan to basically reduce the pesticides as a result of some of the correspondence that we got as well as just needing to upgrade. So, so that was some useful feedback we got from the parents. Helped move us in the right direction.
Great, thanks. So information items, ten point one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, adopted budget and LCAP for KIP Excedencia Charter School and RCSD's fiscal oversight review letter.
Good evening, members of the board. So ten point one, two, and three are our fiscal oversight letters for KIP, Connect, and Rocketship respectively. We went through their adopted budgets and LCAP noted in the review letter as well as anything that we feel should have been there or agreement within their presented budgets and LCAPs. We will continue to monitor. We'll do so with our unauthorized actuals that come by September fifteenth. We'll bring an additional letter back in October timeframe or review, and we will continue to closely monitor, especially their enrollment projections in the current year and the two out years moving forward. Would that, I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically about ten point one or the others.
Are there any questions from board members?
I was, just, I noticed that, I mean, the, first of all, thank you so much for reviewing these. On top of having to just run the district's finances and run the business office, having to go through and review the, the plans that, we know how difficult it is to review our plans, but to review the plans from the charters. And to do it so thoroughly is really, you know, we can't go without acknowledging that work and appreciate your work and the business offices' work on that. The KIP one, I noticed, you know, there were multiple inconsistencies mentioned. Does that get fixed? Because I noticed that last year, they had the same comment on the ones that they put in it, or is it just something that we just are, is the district just responsible for noting it?
I, I think for the most part, noting it.
Noting it.
There is opportunity here that I would like to, along with Patricia Knight, who a lot of credit has to go to for compiling a lot of this information, digging into the weeds, just to talk with them to get their thinking around why they're doing some of these things repetitively, so that we can have a cleaner letter in the future.
Okay. Yeah, and it was interesting to see that the projected ADA from last year for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was higher, and so that they definitely saw enrollment declines over across all three, so thanks again.
Thank you. Ten point four, review of Human Resources Department's vision and plans for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
So HR, which is our, which is Wendy Kelly, Deputy Superintendent Wendy Kelly and Director Erin Keikos, is going to give you an overview of what is taking place, and also to talk about the vision plans for the department. As we go through these slides, there'll be a further discussion in regard to some of the percentages at a later meeting so that we can kind of dig into the weeds at that time. And so right now, they're going to give you kind of an overview, but there will be another meeting where we're really going to look at this and scrutinize it a bit more. So as we plan for the next school year, which you know we start doing relatively soon. Just starting. Go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Well, thank you. It's our pleasure to present to you tonight the outstanding staff that makes up our entire workforce. A few of them are here tonight, of course, but all of our teachers, our classified staff and other management, so it brings me joy to discuss the department and where we've been and where we'd like to go and bring hiring data from this past season for all three groups as well. So as we progress along, I took pictures as I walked out to sites, and you'll see them embedded throughout the presentation. It was so much fun to be there in these last few weeks here and there at different sites, walking around, talking to the staff, and you can see the joy on Ms. Baltay's face here on the right-hand side. But I loved this, this sign on Ms. Martin's door. This one happens to be at North Star. I've been waiting for this day. Welcome back. And it just, the kids were so joyful. That was on the first day of school. So as we progress along, of course, you all know very well the district vision. And what I'd like to do here is add and employees at the end, because that's really what the flavor of this presentation is and what the vision is of the district is to support this work and making sure that we really have the right people in the right positions at the right time. So with that, we are tiny but mighty, I always say, but we have added a couple or one position to our office. So currently, there is myself, of course, and Erin Keikos, our Director of Human Resources, who will be also co-presenting with me tonight. And our wonderful Griselda Santa Maria, whose job is really to make sure that everyone is properly credentialed and all the eyes that are dotted in that process from start to finish. And then Jennifer Sandoval, who oversees really classified hiring. She is our backbone, attention to detail, just amazing staff that I have. And then we will be filling our two vacancies here as well. So we are working on many things in our department, which I'll speak about in just a minute. And most recently took on the employee pieces. Erin Keikos actually is currently taking on the employee notification pieces and tracking and tracing this particular year. So if you didn't know, these are the key highlights in human resources. It's broad. There are varying topics. Some take years to perform, some happen daily. But I wanted to give you highlights of some of the important work that really is sort of the backbone of how this district is run and how some systems are put in place so that people can do this heavy lifting at the school sites and in other locations. Next slide, Erin. So looking back, we really dove into COVID last year, as you know, making sure that we were recognizing the board's wishes and how we progress, and of course, all of the county work and guidelines. We really buckled down and worked with the Special Ed Department on reducing the number of contractors, which was a very interesting process because we learned that contractors really spend their recruiters. And so they spent a lot of time dealing with housing and funds to move people from states to, to California. They don't have the same benefit packages and so forth, and so we learned a lot about how contractors market to other individuals, which help us in our district. Then, of course, the equity goals, which we'll dive into in just a bit, that was important because in spring twenty twenty-one, the board took action in creating these equity goals, so we wanted to make sure those were in place and started the Alder Special Ed Residency Program. So currently, the board had approved two, three, excuse me, residents. We have two in place. One had to decline at the last minute, but those individuals are working every day in our classroom side by side, and will earn their credentials. So we appreciate the, the support for that. And then the various trainings and behind-the-scenes processes that we are working on in terms of making our department a little more efficient as well. Next slide, Erin. All right, I will turn it over to Erin Keikos, my fabulous Director of HR, to dive into our equity practices.
Good evening. So as Wendy mentioned, in the spring of twenty twenty-one, the board took action and adopted our policies regarding equity and equitable practices, and each department set their goals for those, for that work. So these next few slides are really going to be an overview of how HR is working to strengthen and enhance our implementation of these equity goals. So when we look at human resources, one of our most important roles is staffing. And when we look at this main function of HR, we look at the staffing experience through the eyes of an employee. So this, the circular graphic shows the employee experience from attraction to the district all the way through the cycle to, you know, through onboarding, retention, separation, and so forth. So our goals align with each of these stages within this employee experience. So our first goal is about vacancies and how we advertise and what groups we're targeting. And that is really the attraction step in the employee experience. So we are, we are advertising our vacancies across a wide variety of platforms, and you'll see some of the logos for those different platforms here. We are reaching out to our local universities as well. as well. And then in the spring of '22, so just this last spring, we actually went back to something we had done before the pandemic, which was in-person recruitment fairs. And we had really great success with our classified recruitment fairs. We had over 100 interested candidates attend our first fair in May. So we added a second fair in July where we had 80, over 80 attendees. And so that was really great. And so, targeting specific audiences is part of our goals. And for these recruitment fairs, we did that through, you know, firing the community outreach directly to our local communities, outreach to our families and our staff, asking them to spread the word. We have more ideas in the future for future recruitment fairs and how we can strengthen those. And also, we're consistently looking at how well our recruitment and our advertising efforts bring in candidates. So we've added a function to edgway, where every applicant is now marking how they heard of our vacancy. So we can track, you know, is LinkedIn working, or is perhaps handshake working better? So we're collecting that data and periodically reviewing as a team. So we can. So when the employee comes, they are recruited, and part of that process is the employment tests and the interview process. So goal two really talks about the interview selection and then training and promotion, and then the procedures. We want to make sure, and we're always monitoring that our employee tests and interviews, our interview questions specifically, are free from any culturally biased language or content. And this review happens as we have vacancies come up and interviews being held. We review employment tests to make sure that there are no culturally biased questions within them. We use, we use a platform that provides a bank of questions, so we can swap out as needed. But that is something that our department is consistently doing, and we do that work as a team. For goals three and four, regarding onboarding and development, we've really experienced across both classifications, really positive impact, the positive impact of this virtual setting. We've all found ourselves in these past two years. Doing virtual interviews and having a digital onboarding process has really sped up the hiring process in many instances. We have administrators and managers who can attend interviews more often, because they don't have to commute down to the district office to have an in-person interview. We've also found that applicants can interview faster, because they don't have to leave there wherever they are. I'm currently working to come interview down at our district office. So this process has been much faster and has really been beneficial for our administrator and manager schedules, and speeding up the hiring process. For goals three and four, it really talks about placing staff and having the most qualified staff support students who have the most need. And HR has really thought about this. We've put in the time to have some discussions and do some system reviews. So we will be implementing a new system regarding interviewing and placement in order to meet this goal. And there will be more information about that, as Dr. Baker said, in the future. But this is something that is, we have, we have reviewed, we have a system reflection and a system change coming. Oh, I want to go back if I may. So the photo at the bottom is a photo from our recruitment fair that we held here at the district office in May. This is one of our classified recruitment fairs, and we had such a wonderful turnout. So I just wanted to honor, we have Vidal Duran and Martin Cervantes from Facilities, and they were speaking to the people who were there and helping them decide what pathway would be best for them based on the skills that they have and the interest they had in supporting our district. This slide really dives into goal three, how we support and develop our staff. Once we have attracted and recruited and onboarded our staff, how are we supporting and developing them? And this, this idea of developing our staff and building relationships spans all classifications. So you'll see certified classified and management on this slide. The chart describes how, but I just wanted to go over a few key highlights on how each classification receives targeted support to develop professionally. So certified staff receive wonderful PD sessions from ed services, and we also have our aspiring leaders group available to explore how and to strengthen their understanding of how to potentially move into a management role or take on more of a leadership role within the certified classification. For classified staff, every department offers targeted professional development for their staff. We have a district-wide schedule that each manager has access to, and so we can cross-train as needed. I run the monthly office staff professional development sessions, and I know that I have Antonio Perez presenting on topics. We have the Lead Mental Health Counselor presenting. So we really kind of rely on each other and really draw on each other's strengths to cross-train in this classification for classified staff. And managers really target the specific goals of their department by presenting these tailored professional development sessions. And finally, with our management team, we really want to make sure that we're consistently developing their skills as leaders, so that they can best support their staff. So we have the bi-weekly admin meetings, and these skills and these topics are covered. We, HR is also meeting with site, site admin regularly and reviewing staff and assisting with any growth plans or any thought partnering needed in order to help and help develop the staff that is on-site. And when we're doing all of this work, supporting staff and helping them develop as professionals and grow, one of the main components is consistent and clear communication. So we have our newsletter that goes out to all staff once a month from HR. And on this, this is just a screen grab of the last one that went. Within two days, we had 62% of employees, so we had 499 views. So this, this newsletter that goes out is one way where we offer professional development opportunities. We share any classes that might be offered within the community or anything from Samatao County Office of Ed that we think would be of benefit. So this is just another way that we are really trying to strengthen and deepen that relationship with clear communication. The fifth goal, a goal five for HR, is all about retention. And we know that retention relies heavily on the employee experience. And that's what, we also know the five key components of retention that are listed here. All matter and all carried equal importance and equal weight. So the previous slides talked a lot about professional development and creating supportive work environments. That's all done through relationship building. And so that was the last slide that we reviewed on how we are supporting and how we are developing our staff. But one of the other components is employee recognition. And the photo on this slide is from, I believe, the last board meeting, where we recognized the maintenance and facilities team for their amazing work in getting our campuses ready for our students and our staff to return. And so this is something that HR is really hoping to do more of this year with regular employee recognition and just honoring all of the amazing work that happens across all of our classifications throughout our district. So we look forward to bringing more of that to you throughout this year.
So shifting gears, we are going to be giving an overview tonight on this hiring season that we had now for classified staff that's rolling throughout the year. But for certificated staff, we start making plans before winter break and start thinking about the next year, meeting with administrators in January, and hitting the ground running early for certainly our hard-to-fill positions for certificated staffing. We also have that negotiated with our, our CTA exec board as well, that we can open up those hard-to-fill positions early, which we've done. So we will move to the next slide, Erin, and start talking about who we serve in terms of our employees and, and what is the makeup of our employees in the hiring process, but also in general. So in this particular slide, I like this a lot, because I, it helps us forecast where we're going, anticipate potential retirements, looking at the numbers of those that fall within the ranges of retirement, certainly through our, through the retirement groups, RCTA and CalPERS, but also looking at who's coming in. And so for Generation Z, we have a small number, of course, because that goes up to age 25. And teachers typically, if they're on this fast track, earn their bachelor's and earn their credential in a year or so, and then continue onward in their career. So within this graph, we have a smaller number of our entire employee group. And some of this, of course, includes our classified staff. And then you can see where the bulk of the millennial, Gen X, and Baby Boomers fall. And so it can, we can anticipate from a budgetary point of view, from a professional development point of view, from a communication point of view, how we relate to and communicate with our various groups and anticipate. Okay, next slide. So in this particular slide, we are looking at the whole process, as Erin outlined, where we plan for, predict, anticipate, budget for, and project what staff we need, and then eventually hire. So in this particular past year, we, which, which Erin captured is May 10 through July 28 for classified, just to give you a point in time, there were 261 interviews for classified staff. We hired 82 new people into our district, but then transferred 72. And I know that that's a domino effect, right? If somebody transfers internally, there could be another transfer and then potentially a new hire. So that's an interesting point of information, because it does, it is taxing on the employees' time, our managers, to have interviews for our staff to give employment tests, and for, of course, the candidates to come in and the unions. However, it's important work, and we really want to find the best match for the positions that we have. And then certificated hiring, and this, of course, includes management, as I mentioned, starts with the staffing process. And that, that is quite tedious in the sense that we really want to make sure we have a reasonable projection. We also fall within that potential layoff or additional personnel timeframe where those considerations have to be made, the LCAPs being formed. There's a lot of conversations about what is needed for the following year. And we work, of course, on our recruitment efforts. For certificated staffing, we had about 254 interviews with 134 contracts offered. Now, it was interesting, for the first time ever, we had elementary teachers that had a lot of choice up and down the peninsula where to go, and there was a lot of comparison happening. So we would make an offer, and some people would say, well, I'll let you know in 10 days. That's unheard of. So that was quite remarkable. So this past hiring season was probably the most difficult that I've certainly experienced in the last five years in HR, coupled with a continuing, continuing teacher shortage, not only in the Bay Area, but California, and quite frankly, across the nation, if you are watching the news and so forth and hearing the reports. And so that coupled with living in a very expensive area, we want to attract great people to work for us that have the skills, and certainly the credentials, and a lens of equity to bring to the table. But our pool is much smaller. So we don't actually have many people to choose from, aside from your typical paper screening. So the number of people that are applying in general are smaller. And then we're weeding through those applications, and then eventually coming to our interview process. Okay, next slide. So I wanted to open up this a little bit more to understanding some data regarding credential teachers. So in the state of California, 83% of teachers in classrooms hold a clear credential. And that's important, because as we progress through the slides, we're going to talk about number of years and so forth. So that means at least usually two years of experience plus completing induction, which, as you know, our district offers to our teachers and is paid for out of the general fund. And then we have about 4% that hold various waivers and so forth. As you recall, I bring to the board ed code options, limited assignments, et cetera, and emergency credentials. So that's statewide data. Next slide, Erin. So for our staff and who we have here in our district, you can see the numbers of new hires or transfers granted per site for each of these school sites. So for example, Adelante had one person either retire, resign, or transfer out as, as a general ed teacher. So you can see these numbers as we go across, and their total number of staff there. The last column is the interns' emergency credentials, which for us is about five. So that brings us to 6.7% higher than the state average. But I think this is also due to this issue I was just speaking of. Next slide, Erin. So this slide draws upon that previous statewide data of 83% average of those that have, in this case, we said three, but it's relative to the two years of experience that make up the 83% of the data point of the state. And by site, which sites have teachers with more than three years of experience, and then which have less than that state average. So you can notice there are a few here that we are zeroing in on. We also keep in mind, though, remember, we have a large group that are in the retirement age. So as we're progressing, as I showed you on that previous slide, we have to keep that in mind. People resign because they move. They resign because they have, they leave the profession, unfortunately, in some cases. And they also leave because of just life circumstances, having to care for a parent or what have you. And then, of course, we have the typical retirements. But this also includes transferring. And in our district, there's approximately 20 teachers that transfer each year from site to site for various reasons. They have friends that work at another site that draw them in. They're interested in something a school is doing for their particular focus. There's lots of different reasons why this occurs. So I wanted to bring this up. One, Erin, if you could go back, one point of interesting information regarding that slide is that in recruiting teachers, every school district, or, and some might be changing this now, because it has proven to be a little bit of a barrier, is that in our union contract, we really are able to offer up to 10 years of experience. So somebody that has 11 years onward is in a, is sort of in a pickle, because they've passed that point of having their years being honored in their new district. So teachers with 10 years or less experience are more likely to move across districts, because that's their window of opportunity. So 10 years is pretty typical. Okay, Erin, thank you. This is just a snapshot in time. I included the statewide data of racial diversity of teachers as an interesting data point. 61% of the teachers in California are Caucasian white and 21% Latino, and then we have 5.8% Asian as the top numbers. The colors in red indicate the racial diversity of our teachers, and the items in blue are the racial diversity of our students at that site. So this is one of those data points that we'd like to dive in a little bit later. It's a lot of information here. But I did highlight in yellow those areas that HR is specifically looking at, recognizing that if you took, take a look at statewide data, some of these asks, if we're interested in matching racial diversity of students to teachers, might be a large ask. There's only 21% of statewide teachers are Latino, but we expect at, let's say, Taft, 72% of our students are Latino. Are we assuming that we're trying to reach that goal? Is that a priority? So those are some of the items that we want to dive into. But it's an interesting data point slides. We want to present that as part of, in our ARs, we mentioned that we would be aggregating this data as well to look at. Next slide, Erin. All right, moving forward, this is a point in time that we wanted to recognize over the last three years, certainly with COVID, and all that that entailed for us. Our classified data has remained pretty consistent. And what that means is that we haven't had too many layoffs. We haven't added too many positions, per se. Things have balanced out quite a bit, except for in the facilities area where we added day custodians and then eliminated that work, because the COVID. Because the COVID needs had dissipated in terms of, we had new processes in place. Next slide. And then management, same. We, of course, added our. Mental health counselors down at the bottom, so that had, we had an increase over time. And a couple of community school coordinators, as you know, you've, I know you've noticed all of these through the board memos. But as we look forward into staffing, certainly for twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm sure we'll come back to these slides and look at how the numbers have been affected over time. So for our goals and next steps for twenty-two and twenty-three, we, as Erin mentioned, really want to dive into some of these practices. Which might transform the way that we've been doing things in our district in regards to the hiring process. But we will be flushing out our concrete plan. And then continuing our equity training for our classified staff specifically. We have platforms in HR for that, but of course, Ed Services has a wealth of information as well. And looking at various wage comparisons as we progress forward. And then our union negotiations are open for both groups, for both contracts for this year. So these contracts expire June twenty twenty-three, so we have a plan in place to get that started. Over the next few months. All right, next slide, Erin. And with that, I want to thank you for your time and we are available for questions. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
So I, I don't have any questions tonight. I mean, I do think there's a lot of rich data here to. As both Dr. Baker and Wendy were talking about. You know, that we can delve into at a later date because it sounds like we'll make time for that later. But I really appreciate seeing some of the data in terms of vacancies and transfers. And the experience of the teachers at different sites. And then also the racial and ethnic makeup of the teachers relative to our, to our students. So I, I think that there's a lot of, you know, as you, as you mentioned, there's a lot of good data for us to kind of dig into deeper. As we think about how we move forward with equity and just ensuring that all of our students are getting their needs met. And that, of course, our staff are, you know, happy where they're working and all of that as well, because it's, you know, it's an important piece as well. So I just want to say thank you so much for putting this all together. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Erin, for presenting and on behalf of Griselda and Jennifer, for everything that's done. And congratulations on getting us to the start of the school year in such a difficult hiring climate. We read about it all the time across the school. I mean, we read about school districts that are missing tens or hundreds of classroom educators. At the start of our school and we're not in that situation. So that's, that's a, you know. It's a difficult, it's a difficult time and I certainly wanted to acknowledge that. And like Lisa, I really, I did appreciate seeing the representation slides. And seeing that we're going to have future conversations, talking about how, you know, we look at the most qualified staff being, you know, working with the students. That, you know, serving the students that have the, the greatest need. So I'm, you know, I'm looking forward to those conversations. You all teased it a couple of times. So eagerly anticipating that. But thank you again for the presentation tonight.
So I would just echo that. Thanks for the, the presentation. You are a small but mighty department. It's pretty incredible to see how much you can do with, I think, just the four of you currently. So kudos to all of you and all the work that you guys do. And Erin, I want to say thank you too for the, the newsletter, the HR happenings. You did send that to us and I really appreciated seeing that. So thank you for the work on that. And then just one note on the slide that you were showing us, I think it was one of the last ones. We went from six point something mental health counselors in the district to twenty-three point something in two years. So I just want to commend the district for like recognizing the need for those mental health counselors. And I think it's pretty incredible that we were even able to fill those positions. I remember years at the beginning when Dr. Baker first started talking about hiring one for every school. I was like, good luck finding those people. So just, it's pretty incredible. And I know that, that that's been. Very necessary on each of the campuses and how much the, the principals and the staff appreciate having them. So thank you.
Yes, she did. She can't connect.
And then as for me, also thank you and, and the team, of course. I've said you guys wore so many hats and I am very appreciative of everything you guys do. Always looking ahead. I mean, you guys could just say everything's working out. We're fine, but you guys are actually, you know, thinking ahead. And talking about strengthening and supporting the staff. So I really appreciate it. Also, as Janet mentioned, I really do like the HR newsletter. Again, as a classified employee myself, I do always appreciate the communication between. You know, just to make sure that we are all on the same page and know what's happening with the stuff that could be actually. Said to the classified employees. And then just the question. Whenever you guys do the training, do you guys actually like ask the employees what they would like to see? Maybe for a future training or is you guys just have an agenda and then you guys make sure that you guys post ahead of time?
That's a great question. So there are, for classified staff specifically. And even management, there is, there are requests of any topics that are important that you feel need to be discussed. But for certain classifications, there are absolute must dos for training, safety. For facilities and maintenance, certainly upcoming hazardous material information, et cetera. So I would say probably. You know, ninety percent of the agenda is already preformed. But it's not to say items couldn't be added. There's some must dos and then there's some may do, so to speak. And the may do's are really. What we hear from other management that might be needed and from employee input.
Thank you. And then just on the equity piece, again, it is very, you know, my passion. And so one of the things is when you guys do talk about equity with, say, the administration. And the classified, do you guys have separate PDs or is there any chance where you actually have some administrators? With, I mean, even perhaps the administrators, I have the assistants. Come along so that they are all on the same page? Or do you guys do separate PD for certificated and classified?
We typically do separate PD for classified versus certificated mainly because of topic. However, there are crossovers, like the NUA work and the equity work are definitely crossover examples. And other protocols that occur in the district. And then when we have them in person, it's just a sheer number issue. When we need to get people together and so forth. But what we have found to be most effective for classified certainly is when the direct supervisor is working with. Their employees specifically and all of the, that, those topics can be centralized or focused. On that work. But Erin gave the example how she oversees the office staff and then brings in people. As the office staff request for information. And certainly actually Olivia in our business department gives quite a few presentations that affect the office staff, certainly on. Overseeing the student run budgets and things like that, as one example, Power School, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
You know, one more, one more comment. I did want to say thank you, Erin, as well, because I don't think I said that. I really appreciate the presentation. I am a little concerned, you know, if you, you've got your four staff and all the work and you have those two vacancies. So I'm assuming you're fast, I know that Dr. Baker mentioned it today, that you're, you know, trying to get those filled. Because clearly you have a lot of work to do, as Janet and Cecilia and Michael mentioned. So, yeah, anyway, I guess you're all double, double downing, right? I mean, you must all be taking on extra assignments because there's some key things in those various areas, right? They just have to get done. I mean, there's, there's so much work in HR, you know, some work you can sort of put off, but I guess my point is the HR work, you can't really put some of those things off, right?
Right, that's a really good point, actually.
Them about Trish.
Yes, so I, yes, good point. So, so twofold on that is one, really making sure. We find the right fit, just as, as we discussed in all of these presentations, you know, seeking that out. And, you know, unfortunately, the vacancies came to be at really a bad time, right before, you know, August started. And so we're not in the best month to be looking. However, we do have candidates, I'm pleased to say, and interviews are scheduled, so that is in the works. I'm very fortunate that our longstanding HR employee, Trish Perez, who retired but never really retired. Is back and she just can dive right in right away and help support the work, certainly with subs for our AESOP frontline. She's been manning that and volunteers, because we had a surge of volunteers come in. At the beginning of the year through May's Day's efforts and so forth. And so some of those pieces. You know, we want to show great foot forward with our customer service. And so we've all been rolling up our sleeves. And the nice part about HR is all of the employees know how to do all of the work. Because there's so many things that intermix. So when someone's out, we can, in most cases, pick things up, right? But yes, it has been a strain on the department to have this change. But like anything, you know, we work forward and people have been very patient with us. We just explained that we're in this, this moment. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have it all resolved. Great, thank you. Item twelve, other business and suggested items for future agenda? Item thirteen, our agenda calendar, are there any changes? Great.
I, I had a question. So do we have a meeting next week? It's not on the calendar if we do. Or has that been changed again?
That's, that's a special board meeting. It's the special bond meeting that they had called.
Okay, well, it's not on our, it's not in our district, it's not on the calendar for, I mean, I think it needs to get added, right? We need to have all those special meetings on those as well.
Okay, we'll add it. Yeah, it was, yeah, I talked about it.
Okay, that, that would be great. Okay, so we do have, at what time is that?
Six o'clock. It's at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
This is regarding, this is regarding the bond information where we're coming to a close. And so you will get to review the budget and then you're going to look at dollars that are left over. So it'll be from, it'll start at six o'clock.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought we were having it, but I was just surprised that it wasn't on the list. So, okay. Great. I, I know that I've pointed parents to look at that when they're curious about when the board meetings are. So I don't know where I should be pointing them when they have a question about board meetings. If it's that agenda item or elsewhere.
I am going to make sure that it's on the calendar, the website calendar.
Okay, okay, that, that'd be great. That'd be great.
They should go there. They should go to the website calendar.
Okay.
Well, great. With that, it's eight oh three. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? All right, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Perfect. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.